Hospital first for May ninth, 2022, four thirty PM in the Ronald Wilson Reagan Memorial Building. We'll start with the invocation and pledge. Please stand.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege of meeting here today for the many blessings you've given us as we serve the people. Please lead, guide, direct us, give us strength and wisdom as we do the business of the county today in your most gracious name we pray. Amen.
Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge and make this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Agenda's approved. Do we have any vice sign up for public comments? Christie, okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of the March fourteenth, twenty-two Board Minutes.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second.
Hey, you have a motion and second, all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. This is unanimously. The next item is the Ethics and Conflict of Interest Statement, which I will read. Is the duty of every board member to avoid both conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict? Does any board member have any known conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matters coming before the board today? If so, please identify the conflict or appearance of conflict and refrain from any undue participation in that particular matter. Any conflict issues, anybody? Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Operations Committee update and the one bullet under that today is a town hall meeting update or recap. We had two additional town halls at the direction of this Board of Trustees. They were both well attended. The comments, I think, were very similar to what we heard in the first six town halls. A lot of support for keeping the hospital open in Danbury and build emergency room in King. Christie is taking those comments and folding them into the original document, I think that we handed out before, that listed the comments by location and then had a matrix to help people locate specific comments from everywhere. She's in the process of doing that. We'll, I guess, present that as a final report of the town halls at the next Board Trustees meeting unless the board wants us to do something additional with that data. And it would also be available for feasibility study or whatever uses that might be applicable for that type of information. And if it's needed sooner than that, we can... When could you have it finished, you think? Like, it could be available in about a week if it was needed for some purpose before the next Board of Trustees meeting. You guys have any comments or questions on that proceeding that way?
I'm fine with just getting it at the next Board of Trustees meeting.
Okay. Any other comments, questions on that?
I think people's kind of lost their opinion and what they want and what they need, so...
Okay. Alrighty, the next item on the agenda is a Stokes Health Alliance update. I think we mentioned this at the last Board of Trustees meeting, that we needed to get this sorted out, this alliance that was in place, I guess, about eight or ten years ago. Still had funding that was contributed by Forsyth Baptist and the county left over, I think, about $7,000. So we needed, first of all, to be able to figure out how to disposition those funds and determine if the Stokes Health Alliance would, if the parties would like to keep meeting to, you know, continue the original purpose of that group and/or redefine the purpose of it possibly. But we got together, finally got a group of representatives together. Let me just read through the group that was at the meeting, which was done virtually. We had Tammy Martin and Haley Shelton from the Health Department, Health Director and her administrative officer. I was there. Pam Tillman, Christie Blaylock participated. Dr. Kevin High, who's the President of Atrium Health, Wake Forest Baptist, was participating. Jenna Fogler from Atrium Health, she's the Wake Forest Baptist Vice President of Enterprise Strategy and Regional Planning. And Anna Mickelberry from Atrium Health, she's the Assistant Vice President of Regional Strategy Planning as well. And from Novant, we had Chad Setliff, Senior Vice President of Novant Health, Forsyth Medical Center, and Novant Health, Greater Winston-Salem Market. And Alicia Hutchins, Chief Operating Officer, Novant Health, Forsyth Medical Center. Then Shannon Shaver and Amber Brown also participated in the meeting. So I'll let you guys jump in, I'll just give a little overview first and then add whatever that you may have. We talked about the funding piece of it, fairly short amount of time. And then the discussion shifted over to the current situation with healthcare in the county, with the condition of the hospital. I think we talked about the town halls that had been conducted. I don't think Baptist, but Forsyth participated in a number of those. And I don't know, I think we also mentioned the fact that we had the $10 million in the state budget that was, that would be coming soon. And I think, is this here now, right Shannon?
Yes.
Oh, as of today, it's officially in the bank here in Stokes County and I guess can be spent, right? I think, I think that came up a little bit during the discussion. And then we ended up talking about, we told them that as part of that discussion, we'd also had a proposal in to the county from Stroudwater through the Office of Rural Health that they would be willing to do a feasibility study if the, if the county commissioners wanted to do that, or Board of Trustees, as a next step to try to figure out exactly how we're going to proceed with the hospital situation. And then in the end, the, I think the agreement from all the parties was that a feasibility study needed to be conducted and that would need to be done before we had another meeting of the Stokes Health Alliance to decide what, what the destiny of it should be. So I think that was the main takeaway from all of these players from Baptist and Novant that do a feasibility study and then we'll get back together and decide if the, if the alliance should continue or if it would be a good thing to do that.
Third party feasibility study.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, we were talking about Stroudwater being, it'd be a third party.
Who said that?
It was during the meeting.
Who said that?
Everybody seemed to have agreed with the third party thing.
Either Dr. High or Chad Setliff, I don't remember which.
Yeah, but...
They didn't say a need for us to have another meeting until that data had been collected and available.
Yeah.
As well as getting a community health assessment, which Tammy Martin said was...
Yeah, that's right, I forgot about that. She, Tammy said the, she, I think, was a month away from having the, what's it called again?
Community health assessment.
Yeah, the community health assessment done, which would also need to play into the decision about the alliance and then having a feasibility study done. I think we just told them that Stroudwater, we had had a recommendation from the Office of Rural Health from, to talk to Stroudwater and they'd made a proposal to do a third party feasibility study if we'd like for them to do. And I think they priced it, I think it's $115,000 to do that, if I remember correctly. Does that sound right? $115,000. And so, so that was the gist of the meeting. It lasted, what, about thirty minutes, I guess? Something to that effect. And so we have an action item following this agenda item. If the board wants to approve Stroudwater feasibility study, we can do that. The one problem is it's not on our agenda for the Commissioner meeting. So if you approve it in this meeting, it would probably need to be added to the agenda for our Commissioner meeting. So I'll just probably, you guys have anything else to add before we, did I cover most of it? Any other details Pam, you think of?
As far as life right, we do have authorization to proceed with providing information to Stroudwater for a feasibility study.
Yeah, I think we told them that. I think we told them that Life Right had agreed to provide whatever information they needed for that third party study, feasibility study. That's where we're at and the board can decide today if you're ready to approve the Stroudwater study. If not, then...
I'd like to talk about the alliance first.
Okay, that sounds good.
So the meeting that y'all had about the alliance, that was the first meeting since 2016? Is that correct?
I didn't bring the dates, but...
Well, I've got the minutes from the last meeting.
Long time ago, yeah.
That was, it's March first, 2016. It says, that was the last minutes, that was emailed to us, that was the last meeting, prior to that meeting. So, so six years has went by between then. And what these minutes say, which is even more interesting, is that this group, it says this was the first meeting since August of 2013 to try to start back this alliance. However, there were no other members of the organized executive committee present and no matters could be voted on with those who were present today. So, that being said, it looks like it's been since 2013 that this has been a viable group that has been meeting and doing anything. And I'm not sure. And it also says that there wasn't anybody on this committee at that time from Novant or Wake Forest Baptist Medical. It says, it is determined by discussion that the following agencies are needed to make this a cohesive group. Forsyth Tech, Stokes County Schools, Novant, Wake Forest Baptist Medical, Faith Based, EMS, YVETI, Cancer Services, Hospice, Impalative Care, and Head Start. So, you mentioned that you had Novant and Atrium at this meeting, right?
Uh huh, yeah.
But according to this, they weren't even part of the group in 2016.
Remember they...
The bylaws, they are the members.
Right.
They're the one, I mean, the reason we brought this back up is because of the money and they contributed, both Atrium and, or Baptist and Forsyth contributed part of, I think we all put in $10,000 each.
So there's $7,000 left.
Roughly something in that neighborhood, yeah.
Well, I'm of the opinion that since this group hasn't met since 2016 and before that, 2013, that it would make sense just to dissolve the alliance and give the money back, half of it to them, or either give it to our Health Department or DSS, Mental Health and Health Department.
I guess they would all have to vote on how you disposition the money, though.
Since they were the original parties that brought it together, they would be the parties to...
Right. Well, I'm just saying that would be a suggestion. And like I said, you know, a lot of these, I mean, since 2016, I don't know what happens to something like this if it's not maintained and you can, if you can just start it back up or what happens, you don't have officers, do you? You have a chairman?
Yes, the sitting Health Director is the chair. That was one of the issues. We had a lot of Health Directors turnover.
Right.
And there was turnover with the Novant leadership that was present as well as the Baptist leadership, pretty much. I was the only person who ended up being on the committee.
Yeah, I don't see any of these names listed except Tammy Martin was a health educator at the time.
I don't know why the, I don't remember why we quit meeting. It may have had to do with all this bankruptcy stuff and everything that was going on, possibly.
Well, I'm just saying, my opinion, I'm just saying my opinion and the board can have their own opinion, but I just don't see the need to keep it going since it's not been active since 2016 or it was, that was a re-attempt from 2013 to get it going. So, I don't know. I mean, I would, I guess...
That's a fair point, I mean...
It's up to the, you know, up to the members that...
Main thing is just the legalities of getting that money sorted out so that there's not an audit issue with it.
What would be the process to dissolve it, Ty? Just that they have to vote on it?
Vote on dissolution, distribution.
And that's kind of what they said they would probably do after we got the feasibility study done.
That was the whole reason I called it together.
Yeah. If that's what they'd like to do, is decide if we need to keep it or get rid of it.
Okay.
They were not prepared to dissolve it that day.
Okay.
And they were not interested in having another meeting until the feasibility study was done.
Our Board of Trustees could have a position whenever we get back together with them. We probably should have a formal, vote in a formal position on what our board wants to do.
Well, I guess there's no use to do that today.
No, no.
Because if you don't have another meeting scheduled, we can wait on that. That's all I've got on that.
Anybody else have any, on that one? Any comments? And what about doing the Stroudwater thing? Do you want to do that yet or the board ready to go move forward with the feasibility study?
Where the, where does the $115,000 come from to pay Stroudwater?
It come out of that $10 million that we just got. That's what would be one of the authorized uses of it, I think, with the way the wording was presented.
That was how it was submitted to the state, right?
It's an allowable use of $100,000 to do a feasibility study.
Did y'all talk to any other companies about feasibility studies? It seems like a high price tag to me.
That's what, that's the one company was recommended by Officer Rural Health and so we could look at other companies, I guess.
I would prefer looking at other companies for $115,000.
They were willing to do it as an expedited because they knew we had the issues that we have, that they were willing to do it in a four to five week time period.
The issues that we have, what issues are you referring to?
The $10 million at stake and...
$10 million is in the bank. $10 million is in the bank, right?
Yeah, we received it today.
Do we have a deadline on spending out?
No.
No debt, no deadline?
Not now, we received the funding now.
Thank you.
Yeah, we don't have a fixed deadline, but money that doesn't get spent is a target to be taken. So I think we have a, probably a short window to at least explain to people what we intend to do with it.
It was my understanding they wanted to know what action we were going to be taking to start.
Well, I submitted our state to get our funding, but what ended up being able to get our funding was the paperwork that we sent and we had to send a milestone chart in to them, which was a five year time runner of them wanting to know if you had expected results, when something went into service, what you thought you were going to do with the funding. A lot of those things were just blank boxes because there's no plan in place yet. That ended up being able to generate them, we had to submit the contract to sign and we received the funding after that. And you can admit any of those, but there's not much included in that right now because they know you don't have a...
We could, I guess, ask the Officer Rural Health to recommend another one or two companies like Stroudwater. That make sense?
That would be good.
See if they, do they have some kind of relationship with Stroudwater already, though? They're on contract with them already to Officer Rural Health, right? Or like...
We helped all the critical access hospitals with benchmarking, a variety of efforts.
Uh huh. You know, or we could do some, ask them to do some kind of price analysis for us as well.
Yeah, that would be, that would be good.
See if, see if that's a fair and reasonable price for doing the...
That would be good.
I definitely think so because from the best of my memory, when we did the salary study for our group here, did Ms. Shaver, did we not get bids for the salary study here more than one?
Yeah, you had several proposals that you chose from, or you sent out a RFP.
We did.
Probably what process we need to follow again, just to keep everything transparent. I'm not, I mean, I don't have any opposition to a third party feasibility study. I just think the RFP process might be better. Pick one.
Maybe we could do some kind of accelerated RSP or some kind of pricing analysis or something or whatever. So we'll explore that with Officer Rural Health.
That would be good. The more information we have to make a decision, the better.
Okay.
But I'm just would hold off till we can get that and maybe go ahead and meet again next month so that we can have more of a plan, more of a process to look at.
If there's ways of doing price analysis that...
Yeah, the price analysis would be good. It's a good place to start.
That you don't have to do a full blown RFP to do that.
Okay.
At least to determine market price and fairness and so forth.
Sounds good.
Okay to do that with Officer Rural Health or do you want someone else to do it?
Well, if the county is, is going to pay for it and do it, then I think the county, if we're going to put out a RFP, it should come from the county. But I mean...
I need that Galvez's information so you can work with him.
Yeah, let Shannon do it, that'd be fine.
I really liked him, meeting him at Germington. He was very informative.
Yeah, he's good, he knows...
Seemed like a really good guy.
Okay, so Shannon, you'll do that?
We can bring some information to your Commissioner's meeting about that if ours is doing RFP or RFP is ever one we think is going to be the, if you need this way to get some options out there.
And just determine the fair and reasonableness of what they quoted would be good. There's ways of doing that. All right, anything else on that item? A open discussion, any particular areas anybody wants to talk about?
Is there any additional contingency plans other than the ones that, the sheet that we got may have been at the last meeting? Is that still the direction we're looking at going?
I think, I think we're going to end up kind of pretty much with that, what we gave you last time, being the options, the, if we had a contingency other than Life Right, for example, Life Right would have to participate because they have to keep paying the bills till we get some other contingency worked out. So I don't see a whole lot of other ways to proceed other than what we talked about last time.
What about the licensure stuff from the state? Is there anything we can do in regards to that to change anything or the bylaws we talked about changing or updating?
About wanting to get together about that. I'd be glad to work with you whenever you get with me.
I'm available. Yes, I'm available.
I had sent you. Right after the last meeting.
So we'll proceed with the bylaw, working on the bylaws then.
Okay, sounds good. I don't have anything else.
Anybody else have anything?
Are you questioning for licensure? You don't work with licensure until you have an agreement in place.
All right.
Okay, we got one item with unfinished business. There's some quarterly information that's supposed to be provided, according to the lease, that would have to be done in closed session. We, I think we postponed it last time because we ran out of time, so we can go in closed session to take care of that today. I think we got time, yeah.
Read the statement.
What?
I'm going to read the statement.
Yeah, read the statement for closed session, yeah.
North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, to prevent disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or of the United States or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statute.
Any motion on closed session?
Motion.
All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Okay, we're going to closed session right quick. Okay, we're going to closed session right quick.